Including the role of the board in policy development, the unique position of an elected trustee, the board's role in negotiation, and the board's role as defined in accreditation standards. Please understand that we gave the most possible retreat items to her, and based on the time limitation, she believes that we can cover these in today's time limitation. And those of you that have been on the board for some time will recognize that she led a similar retreat workshop five years ago. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Laura.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everyone is doing well and is safe, and it's good to see you even remotely. We've spent time together, many of us, both over the phone and in person over the years. And it's good to at least see you now. I know how incredibly challenging these times are for us right now. And I believe, there we go, I now have the screen. So I'm going to, give me, okay, hold on. This is all so clunky, right? But I'm getting better at it. There we go. So, quick introduction before we go into the actual materials. And I just want to confirm with you that you are now seeing the slides as well as each other. Okay, great. Thank you for helping me with that, Julia. She's so helpful and good at this stuff. So I wanted to, as the chair mentioned, we did have a planning session where I know there are a number of things that the board has expressed interest in doing some work on together. And so we talked about what was a realistic and sort of coherent amount of material we could cover today and what might be better addressed another day. And so today, we'll talk about some of these core governance issues. I will also be touching on, once we get into the materials, I think one of the questions had to do with our interest in board policy. And I was going to just briefly mention that I'll touch in the materials on the board's role in policy development and policies versus procedures. But that, what we might want to be thinking about in the future is the board's role in that process, and that that is perhaps useful as part of our discussion today, rather than what we won't be doing is an actual review of particular policies. That did not seem as productive a way to use the time today. I think there was also some interest in talking about the board's relationship to its auxiliaries. And we, I'm aware of that, and that is also work we do with the district. And that's something else that we did not feel we could fit in today's discussion. But I think the chair wanted to make sure everyone was aware that it's understood this is an area of interest for the board and that we can make time at another meeting to have a good discussion around the board's relationship and role with your auxiliary organizations. So with that, why don't I jump in? The other thing I will just say in terms of some housekeeping is that when I'm doing a presentation, I can only see about four of you at once on the side of my screen. And this is certainly intended to be an interactive, useful workshop for you, which means that I want to make sure you feel able and free to ask questions, bring in comments. This is not in any way intended to be a three-hour lecture. So you may be wanting to speak, and if you are raising your hand either physically or with the little icon on your screen, I may not be seeing it because your visual tile isn't up. So please, jump in. And if I'm not acknowledging that you're seeking to ask a question, it's not because I'm ignoring you, it's just because I can't see you. And so just speak up if you have a question. I'm happy to have a conversation and turn this into an interactive session. Last housekeeping is I think we're scheduled to go till 1:00, perhaps a bit after, that's the goal. That's a long time to be in a meeting. I find that even with Zoom meetings where you might individually have the chance to get up and take a break, that everyone gets a bit of fatigue. And so if we're hitting about 11:00, I will not notice. I'll get quite wrapped up in all the materials. So somebody remind me it's time for a biology break, and we can take a five, 10-minute break so people can stretch and what have you. So Julia or somebody remind me that it's time to give everyone a break around 11:00, if I fail to do that. Okay, so let's jump in. And here's what we're going to do today. The first thing I want to do is spend a few minutes talking to you about the role of the governing board generally. And the reason is that when we talk about the role of the governing board in the negotiations context, the roots of that role and what's defining that role comes out of what your role is generally. So I could spend three hours just talking to you about the board's general governance role, but that's not today's focus. But I at least want to give you, just remind you of what some of those underpinnings are, because that's what really informs your role in negotiations. Then, when we get into the issue of negotiation specifically, I do want to give you an overview of the EERA. That's the Education Employment Rights Act. That's the NLRA for California school districts, just so you have the basic fundamentals of what the ERA requires in terms of negotiations, in particular, in the ways that it impacts the role of the board. And then we will focus on where your role primarily is. Guiding your negotiator and setting parameters, the sunshining process of the proposals, any decision to go to impasse, any decision to unilaterally impose, guiding your chief negotiator, and avoiding a unfair practice charge. And the board has an important role in that. And then we'll just test our knowledge with a couple of little case studies at the end to sort of apply some of these concepts. Again, please jump in if you have any questions or observations or contributions throughout. That is more than welcome. So where does the board's role come from? It comes from a few different places. The first of these are your accreditation standards. And because in a minute, we're going to talk about the unique role of a trustee, we start with this because perhaps your core duty as a trustee to the district is to protect its accreditation. So protecting the life of the institution is perhaps your highest responsibility. And part of what protects the accreditation of the institution is adhering to roles. Standard four of the accreditation standards is about the adherence to roles. It defines the roles of chancellors, presidents, president superintendents, trustees. All of these are defined in accreditation. So the board's role, per your accreditation standards, is to provide broad institutional oversight. The superintending of the district is left to your superintendent and president. And this is the language out of the accreditation standard, is that you delegate full responsibility and authority to the CEO to implement and administer board policy without board interference, and holds the CEO accountable for the operation of the district or the system or the college, respectively. And what is some of the work I've actually done with this board, slightly different iterations, some of you were on the board at the time, some not, is that governance piece of where is that line between broad institutional vision and how to fulfill that in a highly effective way, and the technical operation of the district, which is left to your CEO. And, but this is sort of the broad picture. One of the interesting pieces here I'll mention now, because I know this is an area of interest, is this also is what helps us distinguish between a policy and a procedure. So policy is where you set broad institutional vision and oversight. Procedure is how do we implement those policies? And that is where you will see a lot of the detail. Notably, procedures are the purview of your CEO and generally don't come back to the board for review or development or approval. That's part of delegating full authority to your CEO, is the development of procedures. The analogy that may be helpful to trustees who are familiar with federal and state government structures is the difference between, let's look at the state level. The legislature enacts the legislation of the state. They decide the broad laws of the state. Your Board of Governors implements the procedures, that's what you find in Title V, that implement the law. The lawmaker is the legislature. The nitty-gritty of the procedures of how you implement that is what you see at the state level through your Board of Governors. That same division sort of is what appears here, where you are the legislators of your district. Right? You establish your policy. And then based on that, your administration decides how are we going to implement this? And then, of course, I don't want to ignore the fact that your procedures may go through a shared governance process, that it's not just exclusively an administrative process. But that's sort of a policy versus procedure. And that distinction, in part, grows out of this accreditation standard. Now, your role also comes out of your own board policies. So anytime I do board governance training, one of the first things I do is I go and I read your own policies. So these are your College of the Desert policies. And there are a couple of them that I found interesting and relevant to this training, and that you should keep in mind, both generally as you govern and as you think about your role in the negotiations process. So the first is your Board Policy 2200, which defines your duties and responsibilities. Represent the public interest. Establish policy, there's that word again, that define the institutional mission. Set prudent ethical and legal standards for college operations. Very consistent with that policy-level vision and oversight that you'll see in Standard Four that I just showed you. Hire and evaluate your CEO, your one employee. All the other employees of the district are the CEO's employees, in a sense. Delegate the power and authority to your chief executive to effectively lead. Assure fiscal health and stability. Monitor institutional performance and education quality and advocate and protect the district. So all of that is very consistent with your accreditation standards and expectations for the role of the board. To be sort of the visionary leader's and policy-level guide. Keep that in mind when we talk about the role in negotiations. You will see where this overarching vision of your role becomes very relevant to how we define a board role in the negotiation process. I also looked at this, the other thing I talk about, and I'm going to show you one of your other board policies in a minute. But I want to show you this first, is what I call the, is somebody asking to speak? Did somebody? Okay, perhaps not. I thought I heard somebody try to get my attention. Okay. I talk, when I work with boards-
Laura, this is Friggaan. I think Julia is telling me that trustee Sanchez Fulton has added in by telephone.
Oh, okay, wonderful. I'm so glad you could attend, and we are in awe of what you are doing. I'm, it's an extraordinary time for any educator. So the other thing that I talk about when I work with boards is what I call the unique role of the elected trustee. You are a unique animal and with a complex set of responsibilities, different from other elected officials. You are nonpartisan, right? You are not on a party ticket. Party identification is not part of the election process for a trustee. And in some sense, because you are an elected official, you are elected by and answerable to the electorate, the people who voted for you, your constituent base. You have First Amendment rights to both speak on issues, hold political views, hear from and communicate with the public, like any elected official. But you are also this thing that is called a trustee. Once you are elected, you have the role of trustee, which means you are, in some sense, a fiduciary to your institution, and that is who gets your highest duty. Your highest duty and responsibility is to the well-being of the district itself, which is why I started the presentation with the accreditation standards. Right? Now, ultimately, your responsibility is to the institution and the students it serves, and to the taxpayers whose money you spend. Now, there will be a range of views on a board over what is in the best interest of the district, what is in the best interest of its students, what is needed to preserve the institutional health of the institution. There will be a whole range of views on that. Right? And that's why we have boards, is to gain the benefit of that collective wisdom of trustees who come to their trusteeship with a range of backgrounds and experiences and with perhaps a particular sensitivity to the geographic areas they represent. That's fine. But the lens you're using ultimately is what is in the best interest of the district. This means that trustees have some level of responsibility, for example, to collective action, to speak with one voice, to respect the wisdom of the whole, to not sabotage a majority decision because it's not the one that you agreed with, and to allow the collective wisdom of the board carry the day. So you're always balancing between your individual vision, individual political agenda, which trustees often have, your individual desires, and the health of the institution. And part of health of the institution grows out of your ability to build public confidence in institutional decision-making and the ability of the institution to move forward. So I'm working with a couple of boards right now that are struggling with a very negative public image over the way they interact with each other in public. Right? So we have members of public saying, we log into the board meetings just to watch the sideshow. Not you guys, right? But trustees who allow that to happen haven't found the right balance between voicing their own individual interests and the good of the district as a whole. Because once the public views the board as a sideshow, you have undermined the efficacy of the institution and the health of the institution. So it's this constant balancing of my own views, my own voice, and my own feelings, and the good of the institution, and how you balance those. That's a con, that's not, we might wish that was happening in state and federal political levels.
Question.
But they don't, they're not trustees, the way you are. Yes, please, where are we?
One, this is trustee Mary Jane. Let's say you just recently heard that another trustee on your board just said something during your election season. What do you do? I've never had that happen to me, so I just want to know what I do.
What do you mean heard something during election season?
Let's say, out in the community, you've been hearing something that a trustee endorsed or did something against you. How does one handle that during the election season? I need your help on that one.
Is this a hypothetical? Are you currently in an election season yourself, trustee?
Yeah, we all are, yes.
So I'm going to be, I'm going to give you a very unsatisfactory answer, which is say, I'm not going to answer that question because I want to be very, I want to be very careful that as the district's trainer and the trainer for the full board, I'm not, doesn't give any appearance that district resources are being used to advise any individual on how to run their individual campaign.
I'm not talking about a campaign. I'm talking about when you see a show in a college, in a district, in public.
Well, in, let me speak generally, that trustees in the, part of your political First Amendment rights will include that when you are utilizing your own resources and your own communication platforms, whether it is, whether you blog or you Twitter or you send out a physical newsletter using your own resources and not the district's resources and not the district logo, or otherwise give the appearance that the district is endorsing your speech. When you are completely visually and clearly separating your speech from that of your role as a trustee, you have broad rights as to what you say as a political, as both a member of the public and a political official. What I would strongly encourage, because you're balancing your role, your rights as an elected official and your role as a trustee, if you are currently a sitting trustee, is you do that in a way that does not undermine your collegial relationships with your fellow trustees. That is respectful, that is focused on views and isn't a, doesn't attack people individually or personally. Because you have a role as a trustee in preserving collegial, respectful, issue-based, data-informed relationships with your fellow trustees and the ability to have conversations with them where you may have differences in views over the best strategy or course of action for the district, but are able to have those conversations in a way that's respectful and collegial. And when, and if you're running, if somebody is running a negative campaign, you are with an existing trustee, you're undermining those relationships. Is there, is that, is, am I telling you something at the moment that is grounded in law? No. Most of the advice given to trustees regarding, regarding how they should comport themselves is grounded in best practices. And the linkage to law is to at least suggest to you that you do have certain legal duties as a trustee that mean you should be caring for the institution, and that means caring for your ongoing ability to work with your fellow trustees. But it's mostly about utilizing your own internal moral compass to guide how you engage yourself in the community in a way that preserves your relationships with others. So that's sort of my overarching way to try to address your question without getting into any specific situation. That might be the best I can do under the circumstances.
Thank you.
And, okay. And so then, what I think is interesting, oopsie, is that, looking, thinking about this piece that I often discuss with boards about your role as a caretaker of the institution as a trustee, which makes you different from a city council member or a senator or legislator. You have, you are a trustee. It's a different thing. Is to look at your, again, going back to your own policies, I found this interesting. In your code of ethics, so code of ethics, it creates ethical standards for you about how you comport yourselves as trustees and raises those obligations to an ethical standard. And the reason I think that is true, and this, you'll see this across all the districts, the reason why how you comport yourself as a trustee is considered an ethical duty is because you are a trustee. This type of code of ethics that talks about how you comport yourself, you won't see for other types of elected office. Right? So here is how, so just the fact that you have a code of ethics that goes beyond financial complex of interest, which would apply to any elected official under the government code. Right? This goes beyond those sorts of issues to much broader issues of how you comport yourself as trustees, precisely because you are a trustee. And there are a number of them in your code, in your Board Policy 2715, A, B, C, D, G, H, I. But E is the one I thought was, I wanted to focus on for this training. Be aware that trustees are responsible to all citizens of the district and not solely to those who elected them. The authority delegated to trustees by the voters must be exercised with as much care and concern for the least influential as for the most influential member of the community. And this, again, is an example of the difference between other elected officials and elected trustees, that ultimately, you're responsible to all members of the district community, not just the folks who elected you. Okay? So that, I think, was also part of this body of rules and guides to think about your role. So now let's switch gears and take all of this and apply it in the context of negotiations.
Laura?
Yes.
Hi, this is Aurora Wilson.
Nice to meet you, trustee Wilson.
Hi. I was just looking, I have my board policies in front of me, and I think you're quoting an old policy. That E is no longer in the latest policy.
Well, it's the one that I got off your online policies yesterday.
Well, I got it in front of me, and it's, that is not the E that is in the one that is slated for review of June 2018. So that's an old-
Well, if it's slated for review, then it may be something you are considering. But what's posted on your website today includes this. And here's what I would suggest. Whether, it may be that it's been moved somewhere else, maybe there are reasons why somebody is suggesting that it be removed. I'm not aware of those things. But I, but I think that this reflects good guidance, whether or not it is in your current policy or not. And I think it's interesting that this may be something you'll have a conversation about when you are reviewing your code of ethics. If this has been deleted, why? Because I think it's a good idea. So I appreciate your having done a close look at that, trustee Wilson. All I know is this is what was online, and it certainly is in line with the advice that I give.
All right, thank you.
I obviously like it.
Thanks.
Sure, 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 sure. So now switching gears to- So now switching gears to the role of the board in negotiations. I mentioned that I want to give a quick rundown of the ERA, the Education Employment Rights Act, overview, so you have that in the back of your mind when we talk about the role. And there are two pieces of this, there are a whole set of things that the ERA regulates around negotiations. The two that I think are particularly relevant to trustees and understanding your role that I want to go over are what it means to have the duty to meet and negotiate in good faith, and what constitutes an unfair labor practice. And the reason that I'm going to talk to you about what constitutes an unfair labor practice is because of- in a little bit, we're going to talk about the way in which the board trustees need to be careful in the way you conduct yourselves in order to avoid an unfair labor practice. So trustees are in the position to inadvertently cause an unfair labor practice, and we want to make sure you don't. But you can't avoid an unfair labor practice if you don't first understand what an unfair labor practice is. Okay? So I want to explain those principles as well, so you have them up front. But the first piece is that the ERA requires that local agencies meet and negotiate in good faith over changes to wages, hours of employment, and other terms and conditions of employment. Both of those concepts, what does it mean to meet and negotiate in good faith, and what is a term and condition of employment, are things that have been heavily litigated. There's lots of perb law, the Public Employee Relations Board, the administrative body that provides most of our guidance and authority in this area, have given us a lot of information to help us understand what these terms mean. So I'm going to go through those fairly quickly, unless you have questions, of course. The terms and conditions of employment include, first, I went back a slide again, these things which are fairly easy to understand, I'm sorry, I don't know why that keeps jumping, wages and hours of employment, that we understand, compensation, and what, you know, the hours you're expected to be at work. It's that other thing, other terms and conditions of employment. What is that? And we determine that through something called the Anaheim test. First, perb in- through perb law have listed a laundry list of 30, 40 things that through its review of cases have determined are close enough to terms and conditions of wages and hours, or other terms and conditions, that they in fact are terms and conditions. So the ERA will tell us, for example, and this is at the forefront right now, and I have been litig- I have been negotiating this all over the state, as you will imagine, is workplace safety. Workplace safety is a mandatory subject of bargaining. So what are we talking with- what am I talking with unions about all over the state right now? Under what conditions are we coming back to work? What screening criteria are in place? How are we sanitizing? How are we making- right? All of those are things that unions are legitimately interested in. That's- that is a subject of bargaining. I just negotiated an MOU yesterday with a faculty association over how we are bringing our faculty back to work. Now, some of that, I'm going to talk in a minute about impacts bargaining, so hold on to that thought for a minute. But the Anaheim test is what we generally use, or this is the calculus that's used in identifying what is a subject of bargaining. It's logically and reasonably related to wages and hours, or it is likely to cause conflict, and collective bargaining is an appropriate means to resolve the conflict. And negotiation would not abridge the employer's freedom to exercise managerial prerogatives essential to achieve district mission. So it's the authority of management to operate the district. For example, using our current environment as a concrete way to understand this, it is the district's prerogative to determine whether or not we are going to open up our campuses, so long as we are complying with existing health orders. But once a health order permits the opening up of a campus, or a part of the campus, it's up to the district to decide whether we feel we can safely do so, whether we have the resources to do so, the facilities to do so, and whether we are going to open up. We do not negotiate over whether we are going to open. That's a managerial authority. So we are not- if we received a demand to negotiate over whether or not we were going to bring allied health programs back to campus, that is not negotiable. That would abridge the employer's freedom to exercise managerial prerogatives. But a demand to bargain safety, we would have to talk about. Right?
Laura, would assignment of teaching-
I have a question.
Just a second. Chair Jen is asking a question at the moment, so let's-
Oh.
So Laura, let me start again. So assignment to a particular teaching site, I'm assuming that that is negotiable, correct?
Um, well, that will actually potentially depend on what is in your collective bargaining agreement, and I know that sounds a bit tautological, but the right of assignment can be- is defined in different ways, in different collective bargaining agreements. Generally speaking, the right of assignment is the manage- is the right of management. And sometimes you will see in collective bargaining agreements, language around the right not to be assigned to two different sites, that would require a certain amount of travel within a day.
That was actually getting to the second part of my question.
Or-
The second part of my question was, is travel attached to job assignment negotiable? So you actually, you saw where I was going.
Right, interesting. Generally not. Commuting is generally a responsibility of an employee rather than a employer, but that also, these things can get very, very fact-specific. What is potentially negotiable is assigning a faculty member to attend and provide instructional service in a jail, or other types of settings outside of the traditional college setting, assignment to a dual immersion program, cited at a high school. Those things may bring in certain negotiable elements. But this tends to be, once you get out of the specific list, which I did not share with you, because it's more granular than I think is necessary for this training, the laundry list of specific negotiable subjects that the- that has developed over time through perb law. What it boils down to is the- is this Anaheim analysis.
Okay.
Of is it something that is generally impacting a term and condition of employment? Now, the second piece, though, is impacts and effects bargaining. Once we've identified something that is a fundamental managerial right, like the right to assign, or the right to open up my campus and start bringing back programs consistent with current health orders, there may be impacts on working conditions that then must be negotiated. So you actually have done that, I've- you have done that with your own employees here. The impacts of going online as well, it was the district's decision to migrate classes to an online format in response. We didn't negotiate whether we were going online. The district decided, we're going online. Right? But then, that raised a whole host of questions. How am I going to get training to know how to do my classes online? When am I going to do that training? Am I going to get any additional compensation for that training? The amount of work involved is different, that goes beyond, you know, those are things we have conversations about. How is this changing the workday? Is it changing the workday? Those are the pieces. But the decision, we're going online, now we're coming back, that's the district, and what we're then negotiating are impacts on your- both your classified and your academic employees. And I train on this all of the time, it just happens sadly, that we have a very, very nice, real-life case study we can use at the moment to exemplify these concepts, because we're in the middle of this right now. I've negotiated effects MOUs all over the state for bargaining units over going online and coming back to work, in this extraordinary moment in time. So that's where the impacts and effects idea. So the second, right, there were two pieces to the duty to bargain. One is the subject matter that we have to bargain over, and those are terms and conditions of employment. And the second is, we have to bargain in good faith. And good faith does not mean there is an obligation to agree. There's no obligation to make concessions. Hard bargaining is allowed. We don't have to move and show movement all of the time. However, what is critically important is explaining the reasons for our positions. And that negotiators come to the process with a genuine, open mind, and willingness to listen, and give consideration to what the concerns are and the interests are of your bargaining units. It's critically important to be- this is a creative process. Not everything, you know, we do is- it needs a creative eye. Negotiations absolutely need a creative eye and approach, and a real interaction. We'll talk in a minute about how the board can facilitate good faith bargaining. But again, so keep in mind our need to be fluid, our need- your negotiators need to be able to be creative, the ability to listen and respond, your negotiators need for a certain level of agility within broad parameters that the board might set. So think about, you'll see in a minute when we talk about board role, but good faith bargaining at the table means that, first of all, we don't engage in what's called surface bargaining. Surface bargaining is when you're pretending to bargain, but you really aren't. And one of the things that constitutes surface bargaining is when your negotiator comes to the table without real authority. So if your negotiator is constantly put in the position of saying, "I can't respond to that until I go back and talk to my board. I can't respond to that, I don't have that authority, I need to go back to the board." And the board doesn't meet for another month, and now we're going to go back to the board. If that happens over and over again, that becomes a potential unfair labor practice, because you're not giving your negotiator enough authority to truly go to the table and negotiate. All right? So what we'll talk about in a minute is the critical relationship between the board and its chief negotiator. So this idea of good faith bargaining is really important. So then the second concept I wanted to talk about generally under the ERA before getting into board role is an unfair labor practice, and unfair labor practice charges. So procedurally, there- the Public Employee Relations Board is the administrative body of the state that oversees the enforcement of the ERA. And it receives unfair labor practice charge complaints and adjudicates them. And there is- it's a fairly cumbersome process that involves mediation, and then a hearing before an administrative judge, and then if that gets appealed, it is appealed to the full board, which is made up of appointed members of the state board that does the appeals. And they evaluate a range of things, including charges of violation of the ERA. And so what can be an unfair practice that the perb might look at? A failure to bargain in good faith. Where does the board play a role in that? Making sure that your negotiator has sufficient authority to engage in negotiations, direct dealing, and imposing or threatening or discriminating against employees or employee organizations because of their exercise of rights under the ERA. I've highlighted direct dealing, because that's where boards are particularly- I'm wondering if one of our IT managers of the site can- there, I think somebody took care of it, mute, somebody needed to mute.
I muted her, Laura.
Thank you so much. So the reason I've highlighted the direct dealing is, when we talk about the board's role, this is one of the things you, as trustees, need to be particularly sensitive to, in order to avoid what is considered direct dealing. So I- direct dealing, what that means is, you're- as the third bullet on this slide indicates, or sub-bullet indicates, under the ERA, not only do employees have certain protected rights, but employee organizations have their own independent rights. Your employee organizations have the right to act as the exclusive representative for the bargaining unit. And what this means is that when those things that we've identified as subjects of bargaining, terms and conditions of employment, can only be negotiated with the exclusive representative. And if we have conversations with employees outside of the context of negotiations, in particular when the contract is open and under negotiation, that is unlawful direct dealing. And unions are very protective of their role as exclusive representative, as it- which is appropriate. To give you an idea of how protective employee organizations are of protecting their role as exclusive representative, is I have seen employee organizations file unfair practice charges where the facts involve a group of employees going to their dean, or their vice president, and asking for something. The employees are the ones who want it. The dean says yes, and the union files an unfair practice charge, because the dean said yes to something that is a mandatory subject of bargaining, and that was direct dealing, even though all the dean did was grant a request from employees. So example, the faculty in the athletic department go to their dean and say, "We think we should be on a different calendar from the rest of the faculty, so that our calendar aligns with the high school calendar." Because that way, within our calendar, we have the ability to go out and meet with high school coaches, take a look at high school players, do the types of things we would do to try to build our teams, and we can't do that if we're not aligned to the high school. And we can't do that if we're not aligned to the high school schedule. The dean says, great idea. We're going to shift your calendar to begin and start on these dates. I had that exact thing happen at a district, and the union filed an unfair practice charge. Because the calendar relates to hours of work and is negotiated by the union. Okay? So direct dealing is an area we have to be very careful about, that we're respecting the role of the employee organization as the exclusive representative. And that involves partly the way the, um, the board might engage with faculty who reach out to the board during negotiations. And that's what we'll be talking about in a little bit. So now let's get down to applying these concepts around the duty to negotiate in good faith. And the duty, the importance of avoiding an unfair practice charge to what your role is in the negotiations process itself. Okay? So here's a snapshot, and these are all the things we'll be discussing through the rest of the slides in the presentation. First, your, your role is to give direction to the district's negotiators. I'm the chief negotiator in a number of districts for a number of tables. The last thing I ever, ever, ever want is to get out ahead of my board. I can't put anything on a table that I don't know has been authorized by the Board of Trustees. So I have a responsibility as the negotiator to make sure I am reaching out to the board and scheduling time with you. And you're making sure that you're scheduling time with me. Not me personally, I mean whoever your chief negotiator is. Those conversations occur in closed session. It is one of the permissible Brown Act exceptions, which is conference with labor negotiator. Okay? We'll talk in a minute about what those conversations should cover and what they should not cover. But that just, this is the snapshot slide of the things that fall within the board's role. Then there are certain, then there is the initiation of the negotiation process, which is the sunshining of proposals. That actually, that must occur at public meetings of the board. It's a two-meeting process. So there is the first of the sort of visible roles of the board in the negotiation process is properly agendizing and sunshining the district and the union proposals. Okay? Then there are the final decisions that occur in the negotiation process. All final decisions related to negotiations land with the board. These are core board responsibilities and roles. The first is approving the contract. So when the, your negotiating teams reach tentative agreement on all open matters, the first step after reaching the tentative agreement is that the union will seek ratification. And so there will be a union vote on ratification. After it is ratified, it comes to the board for adoption. So it is not the contract of the district until it is adopted by the board. So that's a core responsibility and, and role of the board. The other decisions that can occur during the negotiation process that, that are final in the sense that they, they end the negotiations or move the negotiations to a very different environment are the declaration of impasse. And if you go to impasse and impasse is not successful and, and you are ordered into fact finding, and you go through fact finding, ultimately, it is the district's authority to impose your last best and final offer. Very rarely occurs, but that is, and that is the, the ultimate authority under the ERA lies with the district to impose its last best and final. That decision is a board decision. Okay? So when does the board get involved in negotiations? What should you be doing? When should you be doing it? The, the start early is my first strong recommendation to the board. Of course, make sure you're properly listing it in closed session. I think it's very important, if at all possible, to schedule those meetings at times that all members are present. It is, we want to avoid backtracking in any decision that a board makes or guidance that it makes. But it's particularly disruptive to negotiations process if the board starts moving down a direction and is giving direction to its negotiator. And somebody who has not been pro, been in attendance for that comes in in the middle and goes, well, wait a minute, but what about this? We didn't talk about this. What about this other thing? And either you're saying to that person, yeah, we did talk about that. You weren't here. Or going, huh, we didn't think about that. Now we have to think about that. And that really impedes the, a good flow and progress in negotiations. So try to keep, try to have all members present in these critical meetings with your, with your, your labor negotiator. Include key negotiation team members. So when, if I'm chief negotiator, I'm chief negotiator because I have good knowledge of the ERA. I do have good knowledge of, general knowledge of district operations. And I'm pretty good at taking what my management team wants to do and putting it into clear contractual language to propose. But I am not the person to decide what is a manageable load formula for, for faculty or what, you know, other, what is a manageable system for the human resources department to track evaluations, you know, manage files. Those pieces, those, those technical pieces and the, the way we might negotiate terms would impact payroll, would impact HR. And I'm certainly not the person to cost out your proposals. Those individuals should be part of those discussions because we want to make sure that the board has all of the information that it needs to give guidance. So who's, who are the key members of your team? The people that, that you need in order to provide direction and your chief negotiator needs in order to develop language are your chief financial officer, who is there to inform the board as to what you can afford and cost out proposals. Your, your chief human resources officer, who can identify the operational impacts that others may not realize. I come up with all sorts of really creative ideas on how to address the needs of or interests of a bargaining unit that once I vet them with HR go, that's not manageable. That's not a realistic way to manage a personnel issue within, within HR. These are all of the unintended consequences that you didn't see as an outside negotiator. So you definitely want an HR expert involved. You want an academic administrator involved. Because of the ways that certain terms relating to, trustee Jen asked earlier about assignment. So the academic administrator understands the challenges and nuances around assigning faculty, the criteria that we propose to use in identifying adjuncts. And how to, how to determine, you know, adjunct assignments based upon expertise. There are all sorts of things that the academic side of the house may have knowledge and interest in as well. So making sure those folks are available to the board is also very important so that you can do your job, which is to make a well-informed high-level decisions. So meeting early in the process is for the purpose of making sure that you have the data and information you need to make well-informed decisions. I, I, I do not need to tell you, and I am preaching to the choir when I say that the responsibility of management is to make sure that trustees are getting information with sufficient time to digest it and apply it in playing their role. Right? I see trustee Wilson nodding her head, right? So we want to make sure that you're getting the information you need. Now, now part of your, now, now also think about the accreditation slide. And, and understanding what it is you do need. And that what you don't need is necessarily granular detail on certain things. But what is the information you need to understand your fiscal parameters? Operational parameters? And making sure that you're getting it in time to provide information, guidance to your, to your negotiator. And, and one, and this last bullet, which supports this idea of meeting early in the process is in some ways, you should be getting information relevant to negotiations long before negotiations formally open or anything is sanctioned. And that means that you are, you are well-grounded in your fiscal health and your fiscal parameters because you are getting budget reports from your CBO that are clear and that you understand and give you the information that you need in order to guide. And that that information should be transmitted in highly transparent ways. I think that in general, transparency supports a positive negotiation process rather than secrecy. The one thing you want to get out in, 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 in the public awareness faster than good news is bad news. Right? It helps to manage expectations. It helps us respond effectively to requests for information from bargaining units. And, um, and so making sure that you're getting regular information about budget is, is really important. The other reason I think fiscal transparency is important is, goes back to the first bullet on this slide. You may go into closed session in order to confer with and give guidance to your negotiator. But a good litmus test for me about whether you're adhering to your obligations under the Brown Act is if you are hearing for the first time in closed session information that goes to the fiscal health of the district, something is wrong. Okay? What you do in closed session is guide your negotiator based on what you know about the fiscal health of the district. You can certainly discuss that in closed session. Can we afford this type of a, of a raise? What, what is our cutoff? What are our thresholds? What can we afford to do based upon our, our fiscal situation? That is all appropriate for closed. But that, but it should be based upon information about the budget that you have already received in open session. What we don't do is use the closed session exception that allows us to talk with our negotiator to come into closed session to share concerning information about your fiscal health that you, 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 you would rather not discuss publicly because it's going to start alarms going off about possible layoffs, possible budget cuts, all of those things. When I do Brown Act training, which I'm hoping I'll be doing with you in January, that's a different topic. The general operating principle is this. If you have something messy, difficult, controversial and hard to discuss, so much so that you wish you could bring it into closed session, that's a almost guarantee that it's something that you have to do in open session. Right? We do not have the requirement of open session to make sure that you do employee of the month in open session. That's easy. The requirement is there to make sure that you do the messy stuff in open session. That's your default. And then you go into closed for these limited and narrow pieces that are appropriate for closed. And you want to be careful not to abuse those. And, and when I talk about negotiations, what I suggest to boards is not only is it the law that you have to be careful, but it actually is a better strategy to support transparency. It's better for labor relations overall. If, if, if clear. And I'm, I'm right, and I'm talking in particular about fiscal transparency. That credible information and information that everybody understands, everybody knows is the information the district is relying on to make its, its, its broad decisions, is being presented. And that is happening regularly throughout the year. So that's my, that's my little speech on get started early. Make sure you're getting the information that you need. Make sure that what you're discussing. So part of your role, I guess, that this slide implies is that along with your superintendent president, who is there to help guide you. That's part of the role of a superintendent president is to, is to help guide the board. Your job is to make sure you're exercising closed session appropriately. And that you're doing it in private, what you should do in private, and you're doing in public, what you should do in public.
Do you want to expand on that a little bit?
On what part of that trustee Jen?
That division line, like what is closed?
Well, that's a three-hour presentation. I mean, when we talk about the Brown Act, I'm happy to do that. But here's the, here's the 30,000 foot on that. The, 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 the Brown Act presumes as a default that you are conducting the business of the district in open session. That's the default. Then it creates limited closed session exceptions that will allow certain things to go into closed. And the attorney general has made clear that those exceptions are to be read narrowly rather than broadly. The most common ones that you are accustomed to are a conference with negotiator, which is what we are talking about today. Employee discipline dismissal release, which has its own complexities that I won't go into today about open and closed, but generally employee private personnel issues. Conference with legal counsel for the purposes of discussing threatening or pending litigation. That one also has its own complexities. There is no closed session called conference with legal counsel. And the reason is, even though you would like, there are all sorts of things that you might like to get privileged advice on. The Brown Act wants to make sure that you don't get to shoehorn into closed session anything you want to talk about just by inviting your lawyers into the room. So instead, the closed session exception is pending or threatened litigation. And there's a symbiotic relationship between the pending and threatened litigation exception and the conference with legal counsel because the, in the only way you can discuss pending or threatened litigation in closed session litigation in closed session is for the purpose of receiving advice of your legal counsel. So it is also a Brown Act violation for an administrator to come into closed session and update you on litigation or a contract grievance if your attorney isn't present. Now, your attorney can be present in a variety of ways. They can be physically in the room with you, they can be on the phone with you, your administrator can come in with a written opinion letter in hand while your attorney is available by phone if you have questions. But one of those needs to be in play for that to be a permissible use of the exception. And those are, conference with property negotiator is another one that you probably see with some regularity, and again, there are technicalities around how those have to be posted and agendized. And then there's some other ones that are not as commonly used, but those are probably the foremost common that you see as a board.
Thank you.
So meet early in the process. What are you doing? You are establishing the parameters and expectations. This is very consistent with that, those early slides about board role generally, that you are there to set broad policy, discuss institutional climate, possible lows, possible maxes, application of COLAs. Are there any limitations that the board has, any deal breakers that are critical for the board? Let me give you a couple of concrete examples. I've been told that by a board, for example, and by the way, none of this, even though these are hypotheticals that obviously come out of my own experience, I just am going to say for the record, to avoid any potential unintended consequences or rumors or anything that come out of this, none of the hypotheticals I'm giving you today come out of any of the labor relations advice I've given at College of the Desert. So I don't want anyone thinking, oh, my God, they're talking about me. Oh, that's my bargaining team. Oh, that's what Laura must have said in these negotiations. I'm being very, very careful so that nobody could even think that none of the examples I'm giving come out of College of the Desert. So with that preface, I've been told by a board, under no circumstances can you entertain a proposal that affects our reserves. We have set our reserves at X percent, we're not moving it. So that would be a direction I would take from a board. As an example of this type of flexibility I like, I recently settled a contract at a district where the historic practice of the board had been to approve every element of the structured deal. So I came in in the middle of negotiations, which is what often happens, is I come in when things get a little challenging and try to help everyone get to the finish line. But in this instance, the last approval the board had given was for a structured deal, and I'm making up the numbers now just to give you the context, a three-year deal of, I don't know, 3%, 5%, 5%. 3% on schedule, 1% off schedule, 5% on schedule, 1% off schedule, 5% off schedule, 1% off schedule. And I said to the board, can I please, the CBO has costed that out, and that is, the value of that deal is $1.5 million. Can you please just tell me I have $1.5 million to play with? Let me be the creative eye for how we might come to a deal, where that's the total value over time of this deal, and I may come up with a different way to structure it that will get us to the finish line. And the board thought about it and said, okay. What I ended up doing in that district, by the way, was I came up with a deal that was actually total dollars less, but it front-loaded the raise and kept it on schedule. When you do an on-schedule raise early in a contract, the employees get the benefit of that raise for all years of the contract because their natural steps and raises are compounded by the early raise. And so it was a two in the hand was better than one, you know, one in the bush, two in the hand, whatever. So once the board gave me some flexibility, as long as I stayed within the broad parameters, you can't spend more than $1.5 million, I was able to come up with a structured deal that worked for everybody.
Laura, I apologize for interrupting you. Trustee Sanchez is requesting to speak to you.
Oh, thank you. I just can't see trustee Sanchez on my screen. So, and I...
Okay, thank you. The question is, I just have a quick question on a previous slide. If we can go back, it's very important in regards into embracing physical transparency, if we can go back to that, that's something that is dear to my heart, is open and transparency on physical matters of a district on taxpayers' money. Can we go back to that, please?
I already did.
Okay. So I would like to know, and here's the question, a lot of times, the board, we get updates. I want to know, what is the actual law in regards to timely updates coming from the district? Because our role on boards is to make sure that we have updates. Is there, let me try to figure out, is there a day, a number on getting timely physical updates, since we have, as elected officials, a fiduciary relationship to the taxpayer dollars that we see? That's my concern, because a lot of times, the district makes decisions that are emergency in nature, and I just wanted to know, what is the language, what is the best practice, maybe, Laura? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, trustee Sanchez. I appreciate the comment and the question. The legal answer is that there is no law that defines what is timely information to a board, or what's the timeframe within which information has to be provided. There is not a thing in law around that. Here is what there is that will be, I think, useful to the board in addressing this concern. And that is, the first is to remember that whether, what the board needs in order to engage in thoughtful deliberations and take informed action. What it is you need in order to do that is a collective decision of the board. So the first concept here is, we have to make sure, and this is, we're sort of, we're diverging a little bit, but I don't mind because it's one of my favorite subjects, which is general board governance and board efficacy. And I actually did board efficacy training with you guys in 2015, so those of you that were on the board then may remember this, and this may sound familiar. And that is that administration should be developing data and information for a board where the board as a whole has decided it needs the information. I do have a worry, partly out of experience working with boards, that I have some districts where administration has become the full-time aides to the trustees, and that's not where we want, that's not their job. And so we have to be careful that administration isn't burdened with gathering data and information because one trustee thinks they need this in order to deliberate and act on an item. There needs to be some collective agreement before administration is going to be burdened with a request to gather data and analysis.
Let me ask you a question. I don't think the question was answered. I just, the board...
Let me, so let me quickly...
The board, that's what I'm asking. The board makes a decision in a collective matter. We operate on a board level. So the board sometimes need to gather information and make decision on embracing physical matters. The question I'm asking is the timeliness of getting...
I'm about to get to that. I just, I needed to set the stage by saying, the information that you're talking about that you need, it's important...
Yeah, we all need.
Thank, exactly, that we need. That's, thank you, that's exactly right. Once you have, once there's information that the board believes it needs, when you need it and your expectations for that is a conversation you have with your superintendent president. Because your superintendent president's roles and responsibilities both include making sure the board is getting the information it collectively believes it needs, and that is the person who makes the decision who is going to be delegated to gather the information. Trustees don't do that, so trustees, and I don't, I'm not suggesting you are, but in some districts, this happens. Trustees are not picking up the phone and calling the CBO or the head of HR and saying, I'd like a report on X, or we need information on X. The board lets the superintendent president know, and then the superintendent president decides who has the expertise and the bandwidth to get this together. The issue of timing is part of that conversation. So part of this is a responsibility of the board to think ahead to say, gee, the contract is going to be opening in six months. I'm not, I'm concerned that we haven't gotten, I'm making this up, information on the budget. Let's make sure we're scheduling some budget reports soon, because we don't want to be hearing about the budget at the moment that we're having to provide. So you're thinking ahead, when is the contract going to, where are we in our contract cycle? When do we want to make sure we're getting good fiscal information? Let's set up a schedule for when budget reports are going to happen that allows us to have the information that we need in order to guide our negotiator. So part of this is the board thinking ahead. Part of this also is the role, I think, of the chair. The chair has a special relationship to the superintendent president in scheduling agendas, and what items should go on which agendas to make sure information is well-spaced and timed well with the action items. Are the reports that are being scheduled for the board well-timed with the action items they might relate to? You know, so part of that is the chair's special role in scheduling, planning agendas with the superintendent president, and the superintendent president is making recommendations. Let's do this board report, let's save this board report for April, because that's when we're doing our policy review, and this board report directly relates to this policy we're going to be reviewing. Doesn't make sense to do the report in June after we've done the policy review. So part of this is a conversation that happens with the broad agenda planning that should be going on between the chair and the superintendent president. Part of it is the board thinking ahead, and then part of it is the superintendent president, if the superintendent president knows that they're going to be coming to the board with a recommendation to issue a notice of charges against an employee. I know from experience, the board doesn't want to get their six-inch packet of information two days before they're being asked to make the decision. Right? So those are situations where you're not, you don't know in advance that something is coming down the pike, the superintendent president does, and is thinking, how am I making sure I'm getting the information to the board in time to make the decision? If the board collectively doesn't feel that it is getting information in time to act on matters, the first piece, and now I'm sort of coming back to full circle, is making sure that that's the opinion of the full board. I do have experiences where I'll have maybe one trustee or two trustees on a board who have a desire for a much higher level of information than the rest of the board feels is necessary. That becomes an internal board governance discussion over how to manage those differences internally. But ultimately, you speak with one voice to your superintendent president that should represent what I call a consensus point, which is slightly different from a majority, which we can talk about another time, a consensus point from the board as to what information we want from our administration and when. Make sure you are speaking as a full board on that and not the interests of each of you as individuals. I do fondly call you a seven-headed monster. Right? And so you have to make sure that you're not managing your superintendent president as a seven-headed monster. So you have to come to, you have to speak with one voice when you're guiding your superintendent president. And that, you can have that conversation in closed session appropriately under superintendent president evaluation. That can be an overused item. I caution you not to take everything you want to talk about in private and call it evaluation, but a conversation with your superintendent president over your expectations for when you want information and what you think is timely, and how much lead time you would like when you're being asked to take action on particular types of matters. That's, you know, anything where you're communicating expectations, you can legitimately talk to in that way. So that's my long-winded way, trustee Sanchez, of saying, there is nothing in law, but you act collectively as a board, both to communicate what you want when, and there are different ways in which you can do that.
Laura, this is Julia, and I'm just notifying you that it is 11:00 AM.
Thank you so much. You know, it's so funny, this is sort of my version of hosting a party and worried nobody will come, that mine is, how am I going to fill the time with a subject? And then I realized that I will actually have no problem, especially when I'm talking about these issues, and I'm very, I should know by now that trustees are not at all shy to jump in, and that's generally a good thing. So what I think we should do is, with your forbearance, is, actually, that's actually a good breaking point, because we were talking more generally about, I'm going in the wrong direction, sorry, I'm meaning to go back up to where I was, this establishing parameters. So why don't we take a short break, and then we'll come back and talk about what this all means for your special relationship with your labor negotiator. It is, it's 11:04. Can we start at 11:10? Is that everybody enough time to just quickly check their phone? Great. So I see you back here, we'll start up at 11:10.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Joel, this is Aurora. Are you there?
Aurora, who were you looking for?
I was looking for Joel.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, hi. I just wanted to thank you for the email that went out about the nursing students.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe that's something we could talk about with regard to the face-to-face clinicals you were referring to.
I think we could do that one-on-one, since it's not on the agenda.
Right, right. That's, I was thinking, maybe later on, though, we could talk about it. You know, if we set up those meetings with the trustees. I don't know how soon we're going to do that, but maybe, you know, I opted for the first Thursday. I don't know if that, you know, works with you or not, but maybe we could talk about it then.
Yes. I know that Julia's trying to make that time work.
Okay, because I'd like to understand that a little bit more, so, okay, thank you, though.
You're welcome.
I didn't care for the Desert Sun article, about that.
Oh, is there an article out already?
I saw it, yeah.
We are, we are in open session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to get started. It's a couple of minutes after, I think people are making it back to their computers, but I will, let me get, go back to the presentation. So we've, we've talked about getting prepared, sort of as that first step. What you're getting prepared to do is guide your negotiator. It's having the information to provide guidance so your chief negotiator can play their role and negotiate your, the contract. Good news for you, your job is not to negotiate the contract. Right? But to guide. So what is, you're determining the goals and bargaining approach for the negotiations, establishing the financial limits of bargaining authority, focusing on the policy and the vision, leaving the operating details to staff. So that same general relationship between broad policy and operations that we talked about in the beginning applies in the context of bargaining as well. My example of that is the one I gave earlier, where I came into negotiations where the board had gotten very involved in the structure of the deal, rather than the overall cost of the deal. And, and they had gotten, in my mind, too granular. What this means is that you have, your relationship with your labor negotiator is a unique, critically important and special relationship. It is a confidential relationship. Very important, right? Apart from the fact that your communications are generally occurring in closed session, that part of what you are doing in serving the district is maximizing the credibility of your labor negotiator. Right? And because if your labor negotiator isn't effective, then the district isn't served. So you are communicating mostly in closed session. And of course, everything that happened is in closed session is sacrosanct. It is a violation of the Brown Act and in some cases, an actual constitutes a criminal misdemeanor to disclose what occurs in closed session. So you really want to protect those, those communications. And it protects the district's position and it establishes the bargain team's credibility as the board's mouthpiece. Right? So the public, the public expression of the district's position should generally be coming at the, first of all, occurring at the table. We'll talk to, we're avoiding the direct dealing issue. And it's being communicated by your, by your, by your chief negotiator. Right? So i- in addition to being prepared for and guiding your negotiator, what are your other roles? These come off that early snapshot slide of the things that are your responsibility. One is you are presiding over the sun, the open session sunshining of the district and union proposals. The EERA requires that you give public notice of the proposals, both the district and the exclusive representatives, that you are not permitted to negotiate until a reasonable time after notice has been given. And that the public, that allows for the public to become informed and express their views. The district adopts its proposal at the public meeting. And as new subjects come up, those get sunshineed. So I'm in the middle of negotiations now where we've realized that one of the effective ways we could counter is by offering something that, in, in a different article that we never opened. But wait a minute, if we're saying no over here, but here's this other thing over here where we could say yes. Why can't we say yes? Because we never opened the article. So you go back and you sunshine it, you open the article. But everything needs to be a sunshine. This is a two-meeting process. So part of what you're, what is starting early is when, when I talk with, when I do, when I train negotiators, is to say, think out your calendar, you know, very early. There are all sorts of things that should happen long before the day that you're hoping to be able to sit down and start negotiations. There's the sunshining of proposals. And to give you, this idea of getting prepared, to give you a little window into what else should be happening that doesn't directly involve the board, but may affect the timing of when we, the negotiator meets with you and how you get information to provide guidance, is that it's really important that we are healing, hearing from and getting feedback from administrators across the system before we negotiate. What parts of the contract have you been struggling with? Where are people, where are there either misunderstandings and disagreements arising? Where do you find the language confusing? Where do you find the language impeding your ability to do the things you feel you need to do in your administrative role? What is your wish list of the things you'd like changed? We want to know those things very early. That has to happen before we sunshine. How else do we know what to sunshine? And there should be at least one conversation with the board over areas it would like to see sunshine. And that may be because you, over the last two years, are concerned with the number of harassment complaints that have been investigated and appealed to the board over the last two years. And so you're concerned about issues related to workplace environment that may affect negotiations because of what you're seeing as a board. You may want that looked at. So even before you sunshine, we're polling the, the administration and, and board for what is it that you would like to see opened and discussed. You may be concerned because of the number of notices of unprofessional conduct that have gone out and would like to see a more robust evaluation process, or, or I should say unsatisfactory performance. Why, what are we doing to give employees good information about their performance so these things aren't happening? So there are different things you might actually see in your role as board, which would give you ideas about things that you might like to see opened. So again, this goes back to that starting early to understand parameters and provide feedback from, over the things you would like to see open, and then hearing from your critical administrators over what needs to be opened. Your academic, fiscal, human resource, safety, facility administrators. So that you're well-prepared to, to open and sunshine what you need to sunshine. That process really needs to start, as you can imagine, several months before you sunshine, if you're going to do it well. All right, okay. So that's sunshining. The other sort of big area that is critically important for the board's role is the decision to go to impasse. And so I want to talk about this a little bit over what might be part of your calculus in deciding whether or not to authorize going to impasse. One thing that is important is to remember that slide early on about what constitutes good faith bargaining. So you're, you're going to want to understand from your chief negotiator that the, a decision to declare impasse is based upon having reached a point at which no movement is happening despite good faith bargaining. So it's important that the board have an understanding of what, what, what is required for there to be good faith bargaining and what is not. Have there been good faith efforts? Have we thought creatively? I've got, and I'm going to give you some, some pieces around some do's and don'ts that will help you in this process. Part of it is about avoiding your own, your own potentially entrenched mindset. Right? Before we get to mediation, to impasse. The second thing to keep in mind, though, is I say, don't be afraid of impasse. Impasse, the first step of impasse is simply that the bringing in of a outside set of eyes to help the parties through mediation. One of the misconceptions that I sometimes see is that in order to go to impasse, you have to declare first, this is our last best and final offer. We have no more movement. We're declaring impasse. And I actually think that's not correct. You do not want to go to, go to something in, in, into, let me say this differently. When you go to mediation, your posture in mediation is open mind. Otherwise, why are you in mediation? So neither part, so the district should not have declared, we are absolutely at our inflexible, immovable, last, best, and final before you go to mediation. What your, what your chief negotiator should be saying at the point of impasse is, I have no more, I have no more movement to give right now. I just don't have any more movement. Maybe it's time to bring in a mediator, help us find a pathway. That's what impasse should be at the beginning. Ideally, impasse is declared mutually. Let's all agree, we need the assistance of the mediator, help us find a pathway forward. I, if I'm going to go to impasse, I'm going to try to do it mutually. And, and it's only, and at mediation, you really are continuing to negotiate, but you have the benefit of a certain more confidential environment in which you're doing that and can do some risk-taking in terms of creative supposals, and what if we went this way? And, because it's all confidential. It's only after that, that a decision in, in the era process that your, your mediator can declare, you guys are not getting anywhere. You're going to fact-finding. And then you would go to fact-finding. And again, you could say, we're not ready to go there. We're telling you, chief negotiator, go back to the table and try to figure this out. And then the ultimate decision you get is, if you go to fact-finding, once you get a decision, it is only a recommended decision. You always have the, the biggest hammer- The biggest hammer is always with the district. It's a hammer that boards very rarely want to use, just as a matter of historical fact. But you always have the biggest hammer in the end, which is to impose. Okay? So if you are going to pull that lever of unilateral implementation, these are the things you're making sure that you have indeed negotiated in good faith, that you have truly exhausted the impasse process of mediation and fact-finding, that you've returned to the table if the impasse is broken. Right? Impasse is broken, we have found a chink of light. Let's go back and try again, and it has failed. You've given the union the opportunity to address the governing board in public session. You've ensured that the governing board has complied with the Brown Act, and you prepare for concerted activity. Right? You understand where the union's rights are if you impose, and you are prepared for that. Okay? So the last piece, before I get into some concrete examples, is the role of the governing... In terms of role of governing board is avoiding an unfair practice charge. So we've talked about getting started early and getting informed, guiding your chief negotiator, sunshining impasse and imposition. Sort of those, the five biggies for you. But then, when you are in negotiations, really important that you play your role in helping the district avoid an unfair practice charge. There are two ways in which an unfair practice charge can occur that involve the board. The first of them is direct dealing. The sec... Well, they're actually both in direct dealing and have to do with communicating directly with the union. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Directly with members and not talking through the union. Let me set the stage for this a little bit. There are two ways this comes up. One is trustees who believe they have an idea for how to break a logjam. They want to get involved, they want to help find a solution. Negotiations have become difficult. So they start talking to folks. Talking to the union, talking to members. So that... There are actually... I'm counting now. There are actually three ways that you can be at risk. So those sorts of interactions with individuals away from the bargaining table is arguably direct dealing and an unfair labor practice. As tempting as it might be, if you think you have an idea or a solution or an approach, you're bringing that to conference with labor negotiator in closed session and brainstorming it there. Not picking up the phone and saying to the president of the union, "Okay, what's this going to take? How are we going to get this done?" And I'm by no stretch of the imagination inventing that that happens with boards. So that's number one. We have to be careful about that. The second is when members of the bargaining unit reach out to you. This is one of the most challenging balancing acts for trustees. On the one hand, you are an elected official. Your door is open to any constituent. Anybody can contact you. But you have a unique relationship to your employees. You're also the trustee over the district. You have the ultimate authority to hire and fire them, to set the policies in terms of their employment, to adjudicate their appeals. They're not like every other member of your community. They are different. And there are other boundaries in place for how you interact with them. And those boundaries are set in different ways and in different contexts. Employees with individual disputes, boundaries are established by your due process procedures and when the board appropriately gets involved in those. Under negotiations, the boundaries are established by your duty not to engage in direct dealing by talking with individual employees about your opinion about the contract, your opinion about the offers, where you think the negotiation should go. All of that can be viewed as direct dealing because you are arguably trying to sway an employee to a position, and that's not our job. Only the union gets to talk with its members about how to sway them to a position. So individuals contact you about what's going on in negotiations. Respectfully listen. I'm not in any way suggesting that you should not respectfully listen to your community, but refer them back to the process. "I've heard you. You have a bargaining team. I urge you to bring your thoughts and ideas to your team. Thank you. Bring this to your union, thank you." I would even avoid saying things like, "Thanks for this information, I'll make sure to convey it to the rest of the trustees. I'll bring this up in closed session." I wouldn't even say that. I would just listen respectfully and say, "Thanks very much, I think our teams are hard at work. Please communicate with your labor representatives." That's about it. The third way that boards can get themselves in trouble, get their districts in trouble, and this goes for administration too, is when we get pissed. So I... More times than I would care to tell you, I will get a call from a district, and this is what they're saying. "We are reading the union's newsletter during negotiations, and from our perspective, it is full of misinformation. We're being painted as the bad guys. They're saying we haven't put any money on the table. They're saying that we are ignoring their requests with regard to a benefit package. They're saying that we are doing X, and it's just not accurate. It's just not accurate." My advice is, stop reading the union newsletter.
Laura...
Just stop reading it. So, yeah.
Laura, what about public statements made by the union even at board meetings, which might not be necessarily accurate by another perspective?
It's... You treat it like every other public comment. You listen and you don't engage. Just like when a member of the public gets up and says something else. And this is... I'm so glad you brought that up because that's a very real and common example. Your employees have the same access to public comment as any other member of the community, as they should. Your union representatives have special access in that they may have a position at a table. They are identified as the negotiator. They may have an agenda item where they are allowed to give a report. So the unions actually may... And your senates may have a special role at meetings and a special voice, which I think is perfectly fine. So you will hear from your unions during the negotiations. You will have meetings where the room will be filled with members in union colors and t-shirts and buttons. That is political expression. It's entirely appropriate. It's highly, highly protected. And you listen. And you actually... And I don't mean go through the motions of listen. I mean, you actually listen. And what you hear may very well become part of a discussion when you go into closed session with your chief negotiator to say, "We're concerned." And your chief negotiator will say, "Well, this is our perspective. This is what they're saying that we agree with and is accurate. This is where we think it's an overstating. This is where we think it may not be accurate." So I think you listen and you bring it into closed session and have a discussion with your negotiator there. But you don't...
Thank you.
But... And so... And the other... And so what becomes a temptation is to respond. And there are... You'll see a slide in a moment when we get to it, but there are very tight restrictions on what the district may publicly state during negotiations. It is not... And just accept it. This is one of those, "Don't shoot the messenger" moments. It is not a two-way street. The union has more protections and more rights in terms of what you say publicly during negotiations than management. It's just the way it is. And just remember, you have the biggest hammer. They have other rights and protections. You have the biggest hammer. But you don't get to make statements that defend your position, explain that it's fair, urge employees to agree with you. Any communication must be extremely factual, dispassionate, no editorializing. And even then, I generally think that they are damaging to the labor relations relationship and that if you are starting to make public statements to correct the record, you've already made a decision that you're ready to go to impasse because it is damaging to the relationship at the table. What I prefer to do is, when I see a union newsletter with a political cartoon of the chancellor sitting in an outhouse and under the outhouse hole, it has "The Union", is to call up the chief negotiator and go, "Really? Are you... You know, can you rein your people in a little bit? This is not helping." So your negotiator's job is to build the type of relationship with the chief negotiator on the other side that you can talk together about your mutual interest to get everybody to yes. And when I have to listen to my chancellor on the phone with me about seeing a cartoon of him crapping on the union, that's not helping. Right? So that's how those things should get worked out. And again, I'm sharing this with you. To say, trust your negotiator to be your negotiator and let them do their job, both to build a relationship and make stern comments where necessary. Let them do it and just grow a thick skin around the posturing that sometimes happens during negotiations. So make sure you're not doing things like discussing options, getting into hypotheticals or what-ifs. This... And I mean, this is... In closed session, these things are perfectly appropriate. I'm talking about in public comments, either to... Directly to employees or even in your own communications. So remember, this... Avoiding the UPC doesn't just mean, "Don't have these types of direct conversations with employees." It also means, "Don't put them into your blogs, Twitter's, newsletters." Right? "Let's get the union a raise." Please don't put that in your newsletter.
I have a question. What happens if you belong to a union?
You don't belong to a union in your district.
No.
So I'm not sure what that would... You're in a... I mean, of course, we have trustees who are in... Who have employment that is unionized. There's nothing... You get to be a member of your own union. But you are... You know, it's interesting you bring that up, trustee, such as, because what it makes me think of is the advice I've given to trustees whose children go to the college. And here's why it made me think of that. That the reality is, when you assume the role of trustee, you are giving up some of the other rights and privileges you would normally have in your life. Being a trustee is a sacrifice. It is a labor of love. Right? No question. It is an enormous dedication to, quite frankly, the single most democratic thing we do in the United States, which is our community colleges and our public K-12s. So... But when you take it on, one of the things that makes it a sacrifice and a labor of love is you do give up some of the other rights and privileges you would normally enjoy. If you're a helicopter parent that likes to help your child file grievances with their employer, I might have some comments about maybe that's not the best parenting of a 25-year-old. But you certainly don't do it if it's your... If the student is in your own district. Again, not a hypothetical situation that I've had to deal with in another district, where a trustee helped her child file a labor grievance at her own district. Right? You're not going to do that. Same thing, I think, applies with being a member of a union. You have rights as a member of a union, but you're also a trustee. So you're going to have to be careful about not bringing into your conversations as a union, active union member in your employment district, information, knowledge, situations, strategies that you are developing as a trustee, and you are for the public, quite visibly, keeping those apart. So if your union decides to vote on whether to do an act of solidarity with your community college district, you're not going to vote on that. And if they vote to show solidarity and show up at one of your board meetings, you're not going to be out in the audience with your fellow union members. You're going to be at the dais with your fellow trustees. So I just think it's a matter of... So many of these situations involve thoughtful consideration of the balance between your role as an individual political official, your role as an individual parent, your role as an employee and union member in another institution, and your role as a trustee of this district. The theme is, "I'm always balancing those two things." That would be my sort of general reaction to that. I worked very closely with a particular individual in two roles. It's sort of interesting. She is a trustee in a district run general counsel, and I have worked with her for many years, and she's a wonderful trustee. She's also an academic senator in another district. And I have worked with her in her senate role because we both do a lot of work statewide on workforce diversity. So we've actually presented and trained together in her role as a senator. So what you're... I mentioned that just to say that what you're suggesting is not far-fetched. These things happen. She, by the way, navigates those roles beautifully. She's very effective in both roles, and she keeps them completely separate. So that's what I would... Yeah. So the other sort of obvious do's, don'ts is, again, getting into any sort of details about your reserves, what you're willing to do with them. These are things that should not be talked about in public meetings or in communications with constituents that relate to how your chief negotiator is seeking to negotiate. And don't disparage members of the team on either side. On either side. And you may be thinking, "How would a trustee ever disparage their own team?" These things get very political from time to time. And trustees will have very strong feelings about personal opinions, about what should or should not be offered. Um, and may feel very strongly that a richer package, for example, should be offered to the union. And, uh, at the end of the day, that is not the will of the board. And that's one of those times where, uh, you, balancing your free speech relationship with your constituency and role of trustee balance is critically important. And that is that you're not leaving those meetings and saying, "Don't look at me. I wanted you guys to get, I wanted you guys to get a richer package." Cause it just undercut, you've got to think about the ultimate, the ability of your, of your, of your, of your negotiator to negotiate. And when you have trustees doing that, it really impedes that. Um, um, so you have to be careful about that. I, I had a trustee several, well, maybe quite a while ago now, but walk out of, uh, a conference with labor negotiator and say, "I'm making as a public comment that I've lost confidence in our chief negotiator." At a public meeting. And I think that's an example of, uh, a trustee missing the balance between my individual political free speech rights and my duty to the district, which is to always support the credibility of the negotiator. Right? In closed session, ream your negotiator out if you need to. You put an offer on the table that wasn't appropriate. I don't think we authorized that. You're going to need to pull that back. You're not communicating effectively with us. If that's happening, tell your negotiator. But don't go into public session and say it. Okay. Um, okay, I talked about this. So, as I said, if you are going to communicate because you are, you, you've reached the end of your frustration line and you feel that accurate information is not being provided by the union, the obligation is that it must be factual, no threats or promises, that it does not circumvent the bargaining table, like putting an offer or making a proposal, that it doesn't violate whatever ground rules were established. Um, it, it's, it, if, if possible, the ground rules that your chief nego, that their, their negotiating teams establish at the beginning of the negotiation process should address, uh, public statements. But be careful of, and of, so that you avoid an unfair praxis charge. What I think is generally more, the, the, the better approach, and this would be more of an administrative decision than a board decision, I think. Um, but so you have a picture of it, is that you establish some sort of ongoing communication system, uh, where you're providing information so that it doesn't suddenly pop up at the moment that the labor relationship is at its worst. So there's just this general update that's happening, super factual, happening in good times and bad. And that can avoid the appearance that you're trying to influence. Um, and it, both, both the appearance and the fact of trying to influence, uh, the bargaining unit members when negotiations get difficult. So the timing of the communication can also be problematic, that suddenly you're putting information out only at the point that, um, that negotiations have gotten difficult. Okay? So, um, I, what I did was I, I created a few, you know, get the voices of some of the other members of the team into the training in, in my own way. What are your, we've talked about the importance of, of the role of your chief negotiator, but what do your, the key people at the table, your CBO, who tells you what you can afford, and your chief negotiator, uh, who often is, you know, has some human resource expertise as well, which is very important to have at the table. What do they want? What, what do they, what do they want from, from boards? What, what would they say, uh, uh, in, in these situations? So from the CBO's perspective, boards that understand what the short-term and long-term consequences are for all the scenarios being contemplated, uh, establish a common understanding of budgetary and fiscal facts. So this goes back also to, um, that comment about being, starting early in the process and trustee Sanchez's comment about timely information. So the process of developing a common understanding of fiscal facts is a, is a process that takes time. Um, and, um, the, 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 the raw fiscal data is being presented in open session. Potential scenarios are closed. What happens if? Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to take that back a little bit. Uh, potential scenarios in terms of offers are closed. I think it would be an open session discussion of, what happens if the May revise doesn't do X? What happens if, um, we don't, the, the, the state decides not to, um, waive FTEs or, or count, you know? What, what if, and the, those are public questions. Um, the only thing I would say about this, even though this is not a, a, an actual full-blown governance training, um, if you have those questions, you're developing them, um, as a board and asking the superintendent if you believe you need that information, to gather it. What we're not doing is putting any administrator on the spot in a public meeting by throwing complex hypothetical what-if questions to them uh, in the moment. It, it's, it's one of the things that I hear from administrators on, uh, as, as an ask, that we're not getting peppered with, you know, those sorts of questions in an open meeting where it's, we're given the professional respect of a heads-up that the board is looking for this information and time to develop it. But, um, the superintendent president provides recommendations and facilitates dialogue. So, so that, that's one of the people that's important in making sure that, uh, you're getting the information you need to have a good dialogue with your, your chief negotiator. Consistent and routine communications and updates. That's that idea of being prepared. Um, and maintaining professionalism and decorum. Um, the, again, this is, we, we want to make sure that we are, uh, building the credibility and respect for our administrators in the process, not undercutting it, because that undermines their, their effectiveness. So what are some of the don'ts? I, and I mentioned this earlier, don't become inflexible and entrenched. Most of the time, there are multiple ways to accomplish the same goal. So please give the flexibility. Your CBO has said you can afford a $1.5 million deal. You have the budget information in front of you to understand generally how your, um, your CBO got to that point. You're comfortable with it. Um, uh, I've also, you know, you know, you know, "We're not giving any more raises. We've given raises for three years." Well, that's an, you know, just tell me how much we, I'm allowed to spend. If I want to spend it with, you know, if, if, if a raise is going to get us to a, you know, we'll do it, we'll manage it in different ways. Right? So be careful about getting entrenched. Um, um, you, don't view data in isolation. These are often complex pieces. So you may be looking at data that, uh, that hypothetically speaking, has been sent to you by the union. And you're going, "Well, wait a minute. This data shows that we have all this expendable money. Why aren't we using this?" It's like, wait, wait, wait a minute. That's one piece of data, but, but here's the other piece of data that we are looking at, all of these concerns or this, right? That's out of context. So be careful about looking at data in isolation. Um, and don't, don't fail to financially evaluate your options over the full length of the contract. Because sometimes they, we, things get looked at in year one rather than what is the cost over the life of the contract. So make sure that that's what you're looking at and you're getting the information, uh, to understand what that cost is. Chief negotiator in, uh, in, in the relationship to the board, what are you, what do you, what should you expect of your chief negotiator? That they seek input from you on negotiations items and make sure in advance that we are within the parameters that you have set. Um, that, um, that we, that we provide updates to you and receive feedback from you. And that we represent the district. Um, what we, what we, what we hope for and request is that boards don't try to negotiate for the district formally or informally. I've had trustees say, "Let me come to the table. I think I can help." Um, let, let, let me come to the next meeting. And that way I'm not, that way I'm not engaging in an unfair practice. I'm not doing direct dealing. I'll sit at the table with you. I think you're crossing a line. That, that tells me you really want to be an employee of the district rather than it's trustee. Um, so, uh, trust your negotiator. Give them the information and the parameters they need, and then trust them to negotiate. And, um, and don't advocate publicly for any particular position. Um, the other thing to keep, one of the reasons that regular updates and feedback are important um, is that one of the challenging things that can happen in negotiations, and to some extent, it's inevitable, and regular feedback will mitigate it, but not prevent it, is what, what, what you don't get to see at 30,000 feet. And this is true for our administrators as well, who are not at the negotiations table. What you don't get to see is the sausage factory. So we're at the table, giving and taking, giving and taking, giving and taking, pushing as hard as we can, realizing that door is not going to open. We back away from that door, we push somewhere else. Yes, we can live with this, not with this. It's a constant give and take. That's what negotiations is. And then we end with a deal. And the people who have been to the table go, "Why didn't you agree to that? How could you have done that?" And we're like, "Really? We've been at this for six and a half months. And you're just seeing the end of it." Uh, and this is what we reached as, 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 as a compromise for everybody. And, and honestly, what, what, what is true for a mediation, a settlement agreement, is true for a contract. The sign that it's a good contract is that it makes everybody equally unhappy. And so be careful about, don't forget that the, the proposals that come to you for, for, for feedback or pre-approval are the process of a, 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 a negotiation, a give and take that is, that is necessary to the process. This is partly about that, that entrenchment. And what I sometimes experience is that trustees and administrators who haven't been to the table have a whole different type and level of energy. And, and, and a taste for conflict that we don't have, because we've been at it for six months and we're looking for the deal. And so being aware of those dynamics and that proposals are a process of compromise and give and take, rather than be, being entrenched, it's very important. And then I think our job in part is to keep you updated enough so that you are aware, at least to some extent, of how that give and take is going. Um, and you actually may see more of that than some poor dean who just sees the deal at the end of the day and thinks that we were, we're just crazy. How, how could you have agreed to that? Well, because it took us six months and this is what we did. And we had feedback from deans that are to the table that this is something they could live with, and this is what we're doing. But, um, so just be aware that, that, of that dynamic, uh, uh, at the table and be sensitive of that in, 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 when you're working with your negotiator. So your chief negotiators are typically responsible for the communications with their respective constituents. So do, this is a bit of sort of a recap. Make sure you do have a basic understanding of the key negotiation issues. Ask for talking points if there are particularly contentious items. Um, and use a vetted, prepared response to approaches by unions or the press. So here's another suggestion for you as a board. Um, if negotiations are getting contentious, we've already talked about how we have to be very careful about public statements that are made um, so that we are not appearing to sway union members or communicate with them directly. They all have to be very, very factual. But there may very well, especially if impasse is declared, you will start getting calls from, uh, the press. And I think what we, what, what you want, what we want to do in those situations is with the guidance of your superintendent president, you're going to come up with a, a legally safe, EERA-compliant, fairly generic response, and everybody gets on board and uses it. Yes, I'm aware we are at an impasse. We are using all available processes to reach an agreement with our union, and we trust in the process, period. Something along those lines. But get, get something, uh, that, that everyone's going to use to ensure that you're complying with the era and not making a statement that would be improper. And be careful not to speak about the negotiation publicly or privately, formally or informally, unless agreed to by the district and the board. Okay? Um, so negotiations can be very complicated. Um, I, if I really, really want to feel frustrated and not very smart, I will start talking to you about faculty loading. It is unbelievably complex. Lab and, and lecture, and I've gotten better at it over the years. But there are things that are extremely complex, uh, in negotiations, in particular on the academic side of the house. Um, very challenging. Um, and, and they can also be very far-ranging with a whole contract open, many articles open. They can also be fairly simple and straightforward, like a one-year salary reopener. All you're talking about is compensation. So do ask questions. We want to make sure that trustees' questions are answered in closed session around the negotiations, uh, and you have, again, the information you need. Don't assume what you know from experience applies. Every negotiation is factually different. And also, don't focus in on any one issue to the exclusion of others. That's how entrenchment happens. Negotiations are often fluid. Sometimes the best way to negotiate is if we hit a brick wall, wall on an issue, let's just stop, let's go talk about something else where we think there's a lot of consensus, get some positive momentum behind the negotiations by settling an, a, a provision where we can feel like we've made some progress, fostered a, a good labor relationship by solving a problem together, and then go back to the hard thing. So there are all these different ways your negotiator might try to work to keep positive momentum, positive communication at the table. Um, so negotiations are often fluid. Um, so don't fix on one thing and just keep hitting your head against that wall. Maybe, maybe just back up from it from a little bit. Go look at something else, that sort of thing. So you may hear, you may see that from your negotiator, and I think that's completely fine. Don't expect your negotiator to stick on one issue until it's settled and not move on to anything else. Um, please embrace that your role is to the taxpayers and the students. That is your primary responsibility in negotiations. Um, don't favor, don't give the appearance of doing so. I already said, don't negotiate with the union behind the scenes. If you have ideas and questions, bring them into closed session. Share them with your chief negotiator. Yeah? So now I just have a few little case studies, um, that we can talk through. They, I, I think these are actually going to be pretty straightforward, but they may generate a little bit of discussion. The union president asks to meet with you, a board member, to discuss critical labor negotiations issues. You, A, meet with the union president and try to broker the deal yourself. B, meet with the union president just to listen but not respond. C, refuse to meet with the union president. Or D, meet with the union president and invite the district negotiator to come too. What do you think? What would you do?
This is Aurora. I do number B.
Any other, anyone else have a different answer? Does everyone agree with?
I'm confused. Meet with the union president and ask. B? You have a press question?
Anybody else have, anyone else? Everyone agree that the answer is B? I'll take silence as consent. I think B is fine. C is certainly within your prerogative, but I'm not going to tell an elected official to refuse to meet with somebody. It certainly would be your prerogative to say, I appreciate your reaching out to me. We are in active negotiations. And I would like to see issues related to labor issues managed at the table. I will certainly listen to anything that the union shares during public comment. But my practice is to avoid engaging with the union when negotiations are in swing. You're not violating any laws or rules by doing that. You're not shirking your duty. But I don't think it is my role to tell an elected official not to see somebody. I would say if you want to have an open door, then you would meet and listen and not respond. My suggestion is that you make it clear at the outset, just to make it a more comfortable meeting, that that is what you're doing and you're saying, I'm always happy to listen to any member of the college community, but I'm just letting you know right now, please don't think I'm being rude, but I'm not going to respond. We're in negotiations right now. So if you want to speak to me, fine, but I'm not being rude, but I'm simply not going to respond. And then it'll feel a little more comfortable for you if that's what you want to do. I think that's fine, but you really should not respond. The other thing I would suggest, and this partly goes to maintaining positive collegial relationships with your fellow union, I'm sorry, your fellow trustees, is one of the ways, one of the times that I see relationships on a board break down, it is when some trustees believe that other trustees are having offline communications that other trustees don't know about. And so in the same way that transparency with the community is important, transparency with your fellow trustees is important. Now that transparency happens in different contexts. For some of those things, it occurs during your board reports. Just wanted you to know, fellow trustees, this is what I was doing this week. This is what I saw. These are the concerns I had when I was looking at this or I was at this meeting, right? Just general things. Around negotiations, that would happen during closed session during your conference with labor negotiator. So your negotiator is in closed session. I think you say, I want everybody to know that Ms. So-and-so, president of such-and-such union, reached out to me and asked to talk to me. I said I would be happy to listen but not respond. I did that. She came to my office or we spoke on the phone on such-and-such a date and this is what she said to me. Now, what you've done there is two positive things. One is you actually have done, I think, what the union president would like, which is gotten information that they want to make sure the board has heard to the board. So it is respectful of that communication that you received. And it is following that general rule that any information that one trustee receives relevant to the matters within your jurisdiction is given to all trustees. And a good internal litmus test for yourselves over maybe this is a meeting I shouldn't be having is, is this a meeting I want to admit to my fellow trustees I've had? If it's not a meeting I want to admit to my fellow trustees that I've had, then it's probably a meeting I shouldn't be having. Right? And this is outside of the negotiations context. So if I don't want my fellow trustees to know this, it's sort of like when we do management training. Read the email, read the text, and if you don't want your mother to see it, don't send it. Right? So do I want my fellow trustees to know that I'm having this meeting? If you don't, then it's a meeting you shouldn't be having. So I think that's a good way to handle that. Let them know you're going to listen but not respond. And then make sure you report that, you have that conversation to the full board to build and maintain trust with your fellow trustees. And that would happen in closed session during a conference with labor negotiator. Okay? At a press conference, a reporter asked you if the district plans to reduce compensation this year. In fact, the board has given the negotiator authority to propose a 2% reduction. What do you do? Do you say, yes, we are reducing salaries by 2%? Pretend you know nothing about it? Or say, respond that compensation will be determined by the collective bargaining process?
C?
Yeah, this one's actually, in the last one, there were two potentially right answers. I really think there's only one correct answer here. I think the point of this is there are ways to comply with your appropriate role and obligations without looking as if, one of the things I think trustees worry about is it appearing that they aren't engaging in their own due diligence. That they are ignorant, that they are not well-informed. And so the impetus behind giving a substantive response is because they don't want to appear that they are unprepared. So the obligation not to speak about the content of negotiations doesn't mean you have to look stupid. You don't have to lie and say, I don't know what you're talking about. Or, no one's discussed that with me. The other nuance about option B and why it's not a good idea is what, let's say the board has given the negotiator authority to propose a 2% salary reduction over your objection. So it's a 6-1 or a 5-2, even a 4-3 direction to the negotiator to propose a takeback. And you vehemently disagree. That you believe there are other ways to address the looming budget crisis that isn't on the backs of your employees. And in fact, you ran on a pro-labor platform and are vocally supportive of your employees in other contexts, which is now we're back to that early slide of your role as an elected official and your role as a trustee. As an elected official, you can have a political agenda. You can have views. You can be pro-labor. All of those are, you can be elected with the endorsement of the unions. All of that's part of the democratic process. But when the board in closed session gives this direction to do a 2%, recommend a 2% takeback and you completely disagree, what do you do when a reporter says rumor has it, which of course is already a worry because it means someone's leaking something, but rumor has it, you're doing a takeback. Is that true? This is one of those points where your role as a trustee supersedes your rights as an individual elected official, in my opinion. In part because anything you say is disclosing closed session deliberations. That's prohibited. So you really can't legally. Second is, once the board has acted, I think you have to be careful not to undercut the ultimate will of the board as a whole. So the other option that isn't on here, but I'm going to identify it so we can eliminate it, is you don't say, don't blame me. Right? So that's, and part of that is because you'll be disclosing closed session deliberations, partly because you are at that point completely undercutting the ability of a negotiator to carry out the directive of the board. And I think at that point, you are failing in your trustee role if you do that. So that's how you have to balance those. It's not easy. This is not for sissies. This is hard stuff. Any comments about that? That balance, that's a challenging piece. Okay? During public comment in open session of the board meeting, the union representative accuses the district negotiator of surface bargaining. You apologize for the acts of the district negotiator, promise to attend the next meeting yourself to straighten things out, respond to the union representative that while collective bargaining is an easy process, the board has confidence in the district's negotiator, or you don't respond at all? What do you think the answer is?
Well, anyone?
This is Aurora. I think I would not respond at all. I'd listen but not respond.
I agree.
So you are seasoned and you caught the trap and didn't fall into it. Right? I think you are correct. This is like any other public comment. When we do Brown Act training, what I've done in, over the last number of years, really changed the way I do Brown Act training, where it's not so much about how to comply with the Brown Act. It's about how to conduct a productive business meeting that complies with the Brown Act. The focus is on how to have a good meeting. That complies with the act, both in law and in spirit. I am a, as my early slides indicated, an advocate for high levels of transparency. And I think it helps you govern. But the, one of the keys to having a good business meeting is to remember that you are having a meeting with your fellow trustees in the presence of the public. You are not having a meeting with the public. So if you're adhering to that general principle, you're not getting into a dialogue or a back and forth or responding to the public. You are listening attentively and the public's comments may in fact affect the content of your, may affect your thinking and may affect your deliberations when you are conversing with your fellow trustees. But you're not conversing with the public itself. And that's true even if you know that what you should be thinking, oops, what did I just do? What you're thinking is C. In your head, you're thinking, the board has confidence in the district's negotiator. I'm not going to publicly undermine my negotiator. But even though that's what's in your head, that shouldn't be what comes out of your mouth. Because ultimately, you're having a meeting with your fellow trustees in front of the, now, the other thing is that you are listening attentively. And so the other thing that I don't like about C is maybe the union's right. Right? So we're not going to publicly undercut your labor negotiator. But if the union says that surface bargaining is going on, then you want to have a conversation with your negotiator in closed session to understand where is that coming from? And you may decide that it is not an accurate representation. You may decide that it is. You may find out that the claim of surface negotiation claim has been made because the board hasn't given adequate authority and the negotiator is, hands have been tied and there hasn't been effective enough back and forth and guidance from the board or the negotiator hasn't taken enough initiative to get that guidance. It could be that this is just a matter of hard bargaining. So the other thing about hearing accusations of surface bargaining from the union is to remember the early slide about good faith bargaining. If the district refuses to move off of its position and gives an informed reason as to why, that's not surface bargaining. That's hard bargaining. We said that we were at the top of our offer. We do not have further movement. We understand what you're saying, but when we look at the numbers or when we look at the operational challenges or this is what we are seeing and we've tried, we proposed going at it this way and you've said no and we proposed going at it this way and you say no. And now we don't have, we have run out of ideas. That is not surface bargaining. That's hard bargaining. And it's not an unfair labor practice if you have, you know, listened in good faith, explored in good faith, tried to be creative and you haven't been able to come up with a solution. So listen to the claim and then bring it into closed session and get an understanding of it and how the chief negotiator views the claim and look carefully at whether the district needs to pivot at all in the way that it's doing its negotiations. Right? So I actually think that is by the last of the slides. So I'm going to stop sharing the screen and now I can sort of see everybody again. And just ask you, we, you know, we can either, I'm sure that you want to keep this training going on as long as possible because you have nothing else possibly that you could be doing during this time and have all sorts of free time on your hands. So I'm happy to wrap this up. Or if you have questions or comments before we close, we can do that.
I have a question.
Yes, trustee Wilson.
I really appreciated your presentation today. And since we just finished talking about negotiations, I think one of the challenges I have as trustee is because we only, the board only meets once a month. So you can imagine how compacted, when we go into closed session, our discussions have to be because we're talking about a number of different topics and have to make decisions. You know, so it's really challenging for me as a trustee to try and understand particularly labor negotiations. One of the things I'm really, luckily, we have trustee Stefan who's on our board who works for one of the school districts and has been serving as a, in the past, as a union rep. So she understands the negotiation process. So in that vein, I'm very lucky, you know, because she's able to pass on certain knowledge to me about how it all works. But at the same time though, again, because we only meet once a month, it's all very compact. compacted into like one hour, an hour and a half, because we're so involved in making other land negotiation issues, other things, you know, that are coming up, personnel issues. So that for me has been a challenge. One of the things that we are doing, though, is we are arranging meetings, individual meetings with President Kineman to talk about different things. And so I'm wondering, is this an area that it's okay for me to talk about with President Kineman at an individual meeting, one-on-one? Is that?
So what the Brown Act says is that administration may deliver information to individual trustees as long as the administrator does not end up acting as a conduit for communication between trustees. So the superintendent president may give information one way, but that information can't include, "Well, let me tell you what trustee Perez was saying about this, and let me get your reaction." Or, "Let me tell you what your trustee Sanchez was saying," and communicating and trying to get an understanding of where the board is on an issue is not proper. The other thing I do worry about, but not so much in the area of negotiations, is that on matters that are publicly discussed and deliberated, that we don't avoid, and this is more about the spirit of the Brown Act perhaps than actual letter, but we want to make sure we're avoiding a situation where matters where the public has a reasonable expectation that the board is going to hear information in public, so the board, so that the community is hearing the same information, and the board is engaging in its deliberations in open session, is being circumvented, because all of the sticky, difficult information is being given, no deliberations, but all the sticky, hard information is being sent out in these one-on-one meetings. And then when the action item comes up to close a building, or whatever, any, you know, is there a motion? Yes. Is there a second? Yes. Discussion? None. Call the vote, unanimous four, and you're done. Because all of the information was given at a, so you want to make sure that we don't overuse those meetings to give information that appropriately should happen under the public eye. And that's just more of a sensitivity to the issue and exercising some good judgment around that, and not overutilize those private meetings to do that. And in negotiations, I would be particularly careful around discussing the budget for that reason. Right? We want the budget to be out there and public. It actually helps us not to have people feel surprised by what's in the budget. And the other thing that is very helpful, it's very helpful around transparency and budget, is that what's, one of the things that's hardest for your negotiators is when it turns out that the union and the district are operating in alternate realities, because no one is trusting the other's information. Right? So we think we're in a budget crisis, and the union thinks we're super flush. And the reason is they don't trust our data. And one of the things that builds distrust around data is if we're too secretive with it. So the individual meetings between the president superintendent and trustees is one of the engines that helps a college function, both because those relationships are really important, and it does help to modulate between varying areas of interest or needs of information levels that your superintendent president can sort of manage a little bit on an individual level, but I would just be careful that you're not overusing that to avoid a certain level of transparency around the disclosure of information in public meetings.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that advice.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I have a question. First of all, I want to thank you for briefing, and we do need this update. Thank you so much for taking the time. The next question I want to ask is, what happens if the district comes out with a communication piece? Having been my background in advertising and marketing for over 20 years, let's say the district gave a statement, and it was, how do we say, it was misused by the public, and we did not call it to a vote. How do you suggest we handle it as elected officials?
I'm having a little trouble understanding the fact situation that you're describing.
There's no factual, a what-if.
So a statement, so the district has issued a statement about what?
No, no. It's a what-if.
And I'm trying to understand the what-if. So the what-if situation is?
Let's say the district comes out with a communication piece, and we have not voted on something.
Well, the district communicates on all sorts of things that aren't subject to a board vote. That's part of the role of the superintendent president. So that's why I think I'm not understanding your question.
Maybe that we don't under, let's say a communication piece was put out, and it was, it was misused, and you're, and you did not, you were not aware of that communication piece as a trustee, and you were, I want to know, what if, how would you handle something like that?
Okay, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what you mean by misused.
The public, let's, let's say the, an advertise, it was wrong, the constituency group or the, the, let's say a radio or a newspaper did their own spin on it. I just want to know, how would you handle something?
Well, without knowing more, I would, my answer is probably going to be, I would ignore it. So the, one of the things we, now we're getting into a whole other interesting, got me off onto some interesting things, trustee Sanchez, but one of the interesting and unique challenges that you face, which is different from your experience in the private sector, is that a community college district is government. And as government, you have to be very careful that you not take steps that appear to suppress the speech of others. And so, for example, it is unconstitutional for a public entity to sue anybody for libel or slander. And I'm not sure if that's what you mean by abusing a statement, but you're not even allowed to do it, because it, the policy behind that is, the view is that government has too big a stick. And if government could sue somebody for slander or libel, it creates an intolerable level of chilling, the ability to speak truth to power. People have to be unafraid to criticize government, to the point that I get to get up at a public meeting and falsely state that somebody is a felon, and a district employee is a felon, a criminal, and we do not have a legal lever for that. We have other strategies, and I've dealt with this many times, but you can't sue that person on behalf of your employee, even if out in the real outside world, it would be a libelous statement, because you are government, and we have to create an unfettered ability of the public to speak critically about government and speak truth to power. So I'm having trouble with this scenario, because you're talking about the community abusing or misusing a statement. What I'm hearing in that is misrepresenting it, libel, slander. I'm having trouble understanding your scenario, so I don't know if I've answered your question, but that's the best I can do with what I've heard, with my understanding of the, right? And, you know, part of being a public official is you are in the public eye. And again, as I said, this is a labor of love, and it is not for sissies. And there are challenges that come from, with being an elected official and a trustee, and sacrifices you make, and one of them is being in the public eye. And that's why I say a lot of this is grow thick skin and turn it off. Turn it off. Don't read the union newsletters, don't read, you know, the things that are, where you, so I'm not sure if I'm answering your question around this or not, but it sounds to me like you're talking about somebody else's political speech, at least at this 30,000-foot level. You're on mute, trustee.
It didn't have to do with slander, and it didn't have to do with any of that, but maybe I should just ask you personally the question. Can we get your, I just, I'm just.
So here's what I think is happening, so I'm going to be a little bit presumptuous and stop you. One of the things I will not do as a trainer is try to answer a specific question that you're trying to get at, and I'm starting to get the sense that this isn't purely hypothetical, but something that you have experienced and you're looking for an answer on. And my role is, I apologize if I've misunderstood that, but so.
It has nothing to do with any personal. Has, and I think maybe I should, let me, let me just, sometimes I think, let me rephrase that, I think I, it has nothing to do with personal. I just wanted to know about open and communication. If a communication piece was given to the public, and a trustee was unaware of that communication piece, how would you handle? I think that's, it has, I think any board member has faced that. I don't know this, Laura, but, I mean, I don't know if you know this, but I serve on the state level, and it's happening throughout California, where sometimes districts do communication pieces without the knowledge of the board of trustees. This is, so that goes on throughout the state of California, so it's not one particular issue.
So for the most part, I think many, and this is just a generalization, many of those communications are going out without the knowledge of the trustees, because if we go back to the very, very first slide about policy versus operations, that is the role of your superintendent president.
Correct.
And there, that, there are communications that will go out that are the role of your administration, right? And I would say if you saw something as an individual trustee that you had not expected or that surprised you, then in the, whatever it is, the weekly meetings or the monthly meetings that your superintendent president has set up with each trustee, you might mention it and say, "I'm interested in this communication that went out. What was that about?" Okay? I think that a role, one of the things that a superintendent president does, any CEO of a community college district, doesn't want their trustees, as a general rule, learning about what happened, is happening in the district by opening up the newspaper. But that's just a matter of relationship, and I think sometimes a trustee's reaction is because they've gotten too granular, and the statement that was issued is well within the purview of what a superintendent president would do as just part of their operations. Sometimes a superintendent president should send, and this is not a violation of the Brown Act, one-way communication out to trustees in a written form. Just remember, it's a public record, so be careful what you write. Trustees don't want you to be surprised, "I just got interviewed by so-and-so at the so-and-so paper about X, and you'll be seeing that in the paper tomorrow." Right? Just so you're not surprised. Just want you to be aware. A lot, you know, that's not a bad thing for CEOs to do, so that you have a heads-up and aren't reading about something for the first time in the newspaper. But that's more, again, just about relationships and practice and having a conversation with your superintendent president. But many of those communications are not getting vetted by boards, edited by boards, crafted by boards. Those are the role of your superintendent president for the most part, and there will be times where, if it's on a controversial issue, I am sure your superintendent president is giving you a heads-up first, and maybe even getting your feedback first on some of them. Does that, am I, did I get closer that time to answering your question? Okay.
Yes, that was the.
Okay. Anything else, folks?
This is Aurora again. I wanted to ask, you talked about the declaration of an impasse, and I wanted a little bit more information on that if I could. Well, President Kineman, are you, are you there? Hello?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I wanted to ask, it seems to me, since I've been in office, I don't think we've ever had to go through a declaration of impasse, right? I don't think it's ever gotten to that.
No, not since I've been here.
This is the point, this is the point in the process where it's the role of every single trustee, to knock on wood.
Yes. So I guess I wanted to understand a little bit more about that, you know, because then who declares it, and what is that process, then?
So impasse is appropriate where the parties have reached a point where they are unable to move on, they're unable to make progress despite good faith bargaining and reasonable creative efforts to reach resolution. It can happen in three ways, scenario-wise. One is the union declares impasse. They, you write to Purb, you let them know you've declared impasse, a mediator is assigned to look into it, you get a mediator who works with the parties. The mediator may say, "I don't agree. Go back and keep working." The mediator may call you in, right? And the first step is a mediated negotiation process. The district can declare impasse. What I prefer is, if it looks like we're getting to that point, is to mutually declare, partly because I don't want there to be a union newsletter that says, "The district has walked out of negotiations." So what I would prefer is saying, "Okay, guys, we've been at this now for three, four sessions. We've given you all of the data you've asked for. We have explained our position until we're blue in the face. We don't have, see anywhere else to move on this. You're not moving. Maybe we should mutually request mediation." And it creates a much better tone and environment when you go into mediation, if you're able to do it that way. But the mediator then gets involved. And if, despite the mediated negotiation process, there is no movement, the mediator may then declare you to fact-finding. Fact-finding is when a panel of three hears a case. It's like a mini-trial. And it involves one person, one judge assigned from Purb, and a representative from the union, and a representative from the district. And it's a very odd process. It doesn't look like anything else. For example, it's completely proper, and what we would do, although I would hope you never are in this position, if I was your chief negotiator and we went to impasse, we would put one of my partners on the panel. And that's not a conflict of interest, right? Or I would be the one, I was the chief negoti, I would go onto the panel, and we would assign another attorney from the firm to try the case. That's not unfair. That's the way it works. And the union does the same thing. And then there's the person in the middle, who's the, right, who's the neutral, and they hear the case and they make recommendations. And they hear the case and they make recommendations. And the recommendations may support the district. They may not support the district. They may send the parties back to the table. They can, you know, there are various things that can happen. But ultimately, after fact-finding, whatever the recommendation, you can impose your last, that's, then you can, then you express your, and impose your last best and final offer. And remember the slide that said, be very careful with that. And one of the things you have to be prepared for is concerted activity. If you imposed, after you've lost at fact-finding, you're, you're in a very exposed position. Right? Two to one, your, your representative votes for you, but the other two are no. Right? So those, those sorts of decisions are being made very, very carefully in closed session with your chief negotiator, possibly with your legal counsel, over, you know, when you're going to pull those levers, what the risks and benefits are. But I do think, if the, if it's, if it's helpful in, in thinking about it, because thankfully you haven't gone through the process, I don't think you have to be ready to go nuclear in order to go to impasse. Impasse can actually be a problem-solving mediated moment that can help you get to a positive solution. It doesn't mean you're automatically going to fact-finding and imposing and getting ready for a strike and all of that. Right? So impasse can just be, let's try a mediated resolution. It doesn't mean we're declaring, you know, we're going, you know, to the, to, we're, we're going to the, the extreme, or extreme remedy that's available to us.
Great. Thank you.
I, I don't necessarily have a question, but I just, I want to thank you for your presentation. It was very helpful and a lot of great information. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Glad to, glad to see you and be with you.
For everyone, Laura has suggested that we really think in terms of quarterly training sessions. And to make progress on that list that we developed, that probably is necessary. And she also suggested a joint session on Brown Act training rather than individual training. And I think Laura would not that sort of be actually hit on several of the items we had on our list indirectly, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would. There were, I think when we were doing our planning, there were two trainings that boards commonly do as a collective group that would touch on these, your ethics training and your Brown Act training. I do think there is value to the board receiving training together. It is how you hear the same information, know you're all on the same page with each other, hold each other accountable, rather than everyone in their own individual time and space going through a training. So I, I, and I think it would be a good idea to do, to schedule some Brown Act training and ethics training. Those are the two that boards most commonly go through as a group annually. And I, I, whether you invite me to, to do that work with you or not, I, I do think it's a good idea for you to do that as a group and make it part of what you do at, at the beginning of each calendar year. January is often full of board training. It's not unusual for boards to do it.
Luckily, quarterly, that would, that would put us in December or January, so.
Which is fine. Yeah.
And, and wouldn't the ethics and Brown Act training, isn't, isn't that a requirement, Laura, for accreditation, et cetera, and part of our, our trustee trainings? Isn't that correct? Yeah.
Yes, you're, you're, for accreditation purposes, certainly they're looking to see that you're getting the training. Ethics training is separately, arguably, it's not required, because the way the statute was drafted, community colleges aren't technically within the definition of government agencies. But we've always viewed that, and many districts view that as sort of an inadvertent drafting error. And most, if not all, of the districts I work with follow the ethics training requirements that are established in the government code.
So, I'm sorry, there's another question?
Yes. Yes, yes. Chair, am I acknowledged?
Yes, proceed.
Okay, no, I, I'd like to be, okay. Laura, I want to thank you for your insightful information. I would love for this to be brought to the California League on the state level. This was very, very informative and very important to us. So maybe, Joel, it would be wonderful that if we could present this maybe at a quarterly, we usually have a Thursday quarterly meeting on the state level. It would be wonderful if Laura, on behalf of the college, what she's done for us here, could present it to all the trustees. This was very informative and very, just enjoyed it. And I think that all our trustees would enjoy something like that. It would be wonderful if she could present that at the next, you know, we have this Thursday webinars and have you, you know, also co-host. It would be wonderful. So Laura, I, I, I hope that you present this type of informative at the state to our, all our trustees at the Board League.
Well, we would be, if, that's certainly something we can discuss offline, trustee. I would be more than happy to do that. I think you've already seen my partner, Eileen O'Hare Anderson, at, at, at one or more of the meetings, and we are a partner with CCLC. So of course, we can, we would.
Yeah, with CCLC and having Joel, you know, kind of moderate that, that would be wonderful on behalf of the, their community college district. Thank you.
Julia has, Julia has just informed me that, excuse that phone ringing, that she has emailed a copy of Laura's presentation to everyone, and it's also available in board docs for the public to view. So if we look at quarterly training programs, that puts us in December, January. So I think that's what we would be looking at, correct?
And if that's what you're interested in, of course, I can just work with your board secretary on finding dates that work for everybody, for sure. Be happy to do that.
Do we have an agreement to work toward that objective? Any questions about that, Aurora?
What about November, Mr. Chair? This is August now, so if we do three months, were you thinking more, is November too soon?
It's no difference to me. November, December, January timeframe, okay?
Okay, okay.
You know, whatever schedule works out.
Okay.
I, I would, I would suggest that if you go with November, that if there is a, any change in the board configuration, that the, your elected, that the, the, the members who would be on-boarded in December be invited to participate. I think the value of the training is to make sure that who, that trustees going forward are participating in the training. So I just want, you know, whoever's going to be in the seat should be part of the training, which is why after swearing in might be a good idea, which is putting it after your, or your December meeting.
Gotcha.
Totally up to you. Otherwise, you're going to, and it may not be, it may be moot. We may be having all the same faces here after November, but just thinking ahead.
Okay, thank you for that comment. That will sort of guide our timeframe. Do we have any other comments or questions? If not, we're looking at adjournments, so open to anyone. All right, in the absence of any comments, Laura, thank you so much for your availability and making this possible for us and sharing your insights and gave us all some things to think about, I think.
Well, it's always a pleasure to see you and work with you, and be safe and well, everybody. And I'll see you soon.
Thank you, Laura.